I never do get any notice from Donna saying, "Thank you."
Really? It's first.
Pat, is the recorder going?
It is.
All right. Is one of those from the media? All right, the Board of Supervisors meeting is reconvened. For the good of the viewing public and our millions of subscribers on YouTube, the reason for us beginning with an item beginning with seven instead of smaller number is we skipped and had some of those items up in the atrium due to a longer-than-anticipated historical committee meeting where we opened the contents of the time capsule in the cornerstone of the courthouse. With that, item 7C, originally moved out of the consent agenda, is now up for action. This is to accept and approve the proposal supplying precast bridge sections. County engineer, Mark Nero.
We solicited three companies for precast bridge sections for Bridge V-84-2, which is on Lee Avenue, south of Anthem. We received one quotation from Oden Enterprises for the deck slab sections and thrive beam rail over the top. Their total bid price was $45,995.80. This compares very favorably with a shorter bridge that we bought five years ago, I believe it was. They came in at $41,000 for a 37-foot bridge. So their price point is really in about the same area, and it's below what our estimate was on this project. We acquire these precast sections, we pay the contractor to build the abutment, and set them in place on the bridge. This is a bridge design that goes over a smaller watershed as Lee Avenue is and has the potential to allow winter construction. We're expecting to let this to contract late December. I recommend we award the quotation to Oden Enterprises.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Discussion. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Next is item nine, from the Community and Economic Development Department Director, David Gleiser. Begins with item A, Quarterly Update on Simcoe City-County Membership Dues Project.
Good evening, Supervisors. David Gleiser, Community Economic Development Director. I have with me today Michelle Bossedinellis, Executive Director for Simcoe, and she's going to give the first quarterly report for our membership dues project with Simcoe and our rural communities. Happy to report that we had an increase of two communities that participated last, you know, from last year. We went from eight communities participating to 10 this year. So with that, Michelle.
Hello. You do have a report in your packet, similar report format that I gave to you last year. So we're excited to do this again, and I think the communities, you know, saw a great benefit and we enjoyed working with them. So we're excited to work on this again. As David mentioned, there are 10 communities who have agreed to participate. We have Anthem, Bronson, Cushing, Danbury, Hornet, Mobile, Odo, Sergeant Bluff, and Smithlin. So Anthem, Cushing, and Mobile are new on the membership list. So I think I reported in there that we spent about 56 direct hours, which equaled about[310.64][311.24]$3,808 for our time directly with the communities during the first quarter. And about 108 hours indirect time, that's about $7,344. So it equals about $11,000, a little bit over $11,000 in time during the first quarter. If you guys do remember, we did it, for some reason, we got moving a little bit later on this. I think I came to talk to you probably, I think, in September, maybe it's the end of August or maybe in September. Okay, September 5th. So we are kind of already getting towards the end of the first quarter because our quarters, you know, start July 1 there. So some, most of the first quarter was reaching out to the communities and with some of them asking if they want to have a membership, what projects do you want to do, asking the other ones, you know, if they had and are repaying their Simcoe dues, if they're planning on it. So a lot of the communication that went on during the first quarter was really kind of centered around those types of communication. As you remember, Sergeant Bluff is a little bit unique because they are part of the metropolitan area of Sioux City, and so a lot of our work with them is related to our work with Metropolitan Planning Organization or the NPO. And so that's making sure that the projects that receive federal funding are tied to a transportation improvement program. We've been working a lot with the county and Sergeant Bluff in Sioux City on the IJR for South Bridge. We, and with that, we had a long-range transportation plan. So there's kind of just a lot of work going on with that. We do have several communities we've been working with in terms of safe routes to school. And Sergeant Bluff is one of them. They've been, one of their projects this, over the summer, was to go back through their list of priorities and kind of, they had done a lot of improvements in terms of bicycle, pedestrian infrastructure and kind of get their next list of projects that they want to do. So we helped them with that. Other things that we are working on, I guess, for kind of region-wide, we are sitting on the Midstates Community Economic Development Conference Planning Committee, I believe David sits on that as well, and they're planning another conference for April 2018. And so that's a great opportunity for all the communities to come together and get to hear a day-long presentation of different economic development ideas. So helping with that conference. Another region-wide project that we're working on is for a proposal that our, the Simcoe Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies, or SEDS, committee is putting together a grant application to EDA, Economic Development Administration, looking at doing an economic development study for the Highway 20 corridor, especially with the floor lane coming through. I think it's probably a great idea for us to look at this corridor as a region and kind of come up with a strategy of how we want economic development done, not only in Woodbury County, but also in Ida County. And then, you know, Highway 20 goes over into Dakota County as well. Our SEDS region, you know, covers multi-state. So, and I hope, maybe I can come back to you with more about that project. We have been in communication with the communities along that corridor, even the ones who didn't agree to membership here, and they did seem interested in that. So I'll work with David maybe to get that proposal back to you so we can talk about that a little bit more. We are going to have to come up with some matching dollars. But EDA does think it's a really great project, and I think with Highway 20, we should be cutting the ribbon a year from now. We really should, you know, be really looking at the economic development along the corridor. Other things, I guess I want to mention too, is that Simcoe houses the Housing Trust Fund for the region, and there were two projects, housing rehab projects that got done in Mobile and Sloan during the first quarter. And then also in the report, there's a list of meetings and activities that we're part of, that we attend and represent Woodbury County communities at those. If you kind of flip through to the, on page three, you can see, just talking about work anticipated in this next quarter, you know, we're going to keep working with some of the communities to develop their project list. That was really a goal. I was trying really hard to get that done in the first quarter, but again, since we signed on a little bit late, there's some of them I didn't quite get to, and then there's a few now we're waiting for Harvest to get done so that I can meet with the mayor and get the project list. So there's a couple of them that I still need to sit down with. Otherwise, Sergeant Bluff did talk to us, or they're planning zoning, to talk to us about doing an update to their comprehensive plan. And so we're going to work on, they do have a comprehensive plan and they have a facilities plan, but looking at it, possibly combining those plans together. So we're going to be meeting with their planning and zoning commission just after December 5th, I believe, to talk about, you know, what that could look like. We're going to, we did put a proposal together to help Odo with the code update. Also, Smithlin and Odo, I actually had staff out there this week, working with them on their annual financial report. I expect that we'll keep working with Sergeant Bluff, Lawton, some of the other communities on safe routes to school projects. As you may know or had heard, we did meet with the mayors in Woodbury County to talk about ambulance service. So we did that. Actually, already did that, but that happened in the second quarter. We're also working with Homeland, Iowa Homeland Security, to submit a grant application to get the hazard mitigation plans updated. Again, that's another region-wide important plans that we get updated. Those expire here in 2019. And Plymouth County is taking the lead on the application, the application would be for our five-county area. So something that we're also working on right now. And then the other thing that we're planning that's coming up on December 1st here is we're hosting a tri-state legislative forum at WIT, and all of our members have been invited, and we're going to be talking about issues and concerns that, especially we hear from our smaller rural communities about the issues that they're facing and struggling with. So that's kind of, some of its preview is because it's happening now as we're in the second quarter, actually kind of getting the second quarter wrapped up. If you flip over then to kind of page five there, you can see then the list, I list all the communities. I changed the table a little bit. I tried to put what the communities, what their goals or priorities are so that we all kind of have an idea as we're working through here what they want to, what they want to work on. As you can see, Anthem, that was one, I'm still waiting to set up the meeting. I'll get ahold of them. I know the mayor was waiting for Harvest to get done. Bronson, so they would let us know, they're kind of waiting for their comprehensive plan to get wrapped up before they really could get rolling on project. But we did help them in the first quarter with some grant information about generator funding. They received a MURD grant, but they had a little gap in funding, so they were looking for different opportunities to fund that. Cushing, we did, again, also meet with them this quarter just recently, and they're interested in grants and downtown revitalization. Danbury, actually I have a meeting set up with them this month, or next month, I should say, and I know they want to update their code. Hornet, you can kind of see there, they have a longer list there. They're looking for some of their policies and procedures for their council to be updated, some grants, updates, ordinances, getting some community groups formed. Lawton is interested in downtown revitalization, safe routes to school. Mobile, a meeting with next week. And let me see here, Odo, again, financial report, budget, which we're doing, code update, they're interested in grants and trails. Smithlin, their financial report and their budget is kind of their top priority, and that kind of has been those last several years. And again, we talked about safe routes to school with Sergeant Bluff and their comp plan and NPO activities there. A couple of things that we did work on also in the first quarter, I didn't mention, is that we did help Odo and Lawton with MURD grants, which they were successful at receiving. So they both, Lawton received $50,000 in MURD grants for trail development and Odo for their ambulance, for some equipment for their ambulance service. So they're all busy, they all have lots of things that they want to work on and kind of keep, keep moving along with them. Do you have a question?
Yes, thank you very much, Michelle. So my question was related to the Highway 20 corridor and those communities that didn't necessarily want to participate early on, but now may see, hmm, maybe this is a good idea after all.
Right.
So do you have any plan to say, okay, if you didn't participate and you want to now in this project, is there any kind of funding that might be asked of them? Because if somebody is participating and they're receiving the same, so I just wondered what your thoughts are on all that.
Yeah, we haven't quite, maybe we haven't thought that all the way through yet. I do know at the SEDS meeting last week, we did talk about talking to different groups, organizations, including the cities and including the counties, to try to come up with that match for the grant. Because we're proposing the plan would at least cost us $50,000 to write, and it's only 50% funded, so we need $25,000. So I would expect, you know, we would probably hit up the city councils kind of along.
You said $50,000 to write it?
Yeah, right, yeah. So, so, you know, I expect that we're going to go to all the city councils along the corridor and talk to them about it and see if they're able to contribute. It was mentioned at our meeting that Mid-American offers a grant, so we're going to talk to Mid-American. There's a, you know, to see if we can maybe regionally kind of collectively come up with the $25,000 local match to do this project. So I guess what I'm saying is I don't think that they need to be Simcoe members to be, to participate in this, because I think we need the whole region in that. If we get there and they're, they like Simcoe's work and they want to be part of Simcoe, you know, maybe from this, I think that's great, and then we can talk about, you know, membership.
And reminding, what is the total grant for, in dollar amount?
For the, for the study? Okay, so it would be through, the grant would be through U.S. EDA, and what we're proposing is to write a grant for $50,000 to do this, this corridor study, and it'd be a 50% local match.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and you know, we did talk about, you know, is that even enough money? And talking to EDA, they kind of were thinking, you know, that's probably the max you should ask for, and maybe it's one of those deals, we get in there and we kind of do a phase one, and maybe later we apply for some more money and do a phase two with it. You know, really, you know, what our plan is for the first part of it is really to kind of do, to do inventory of what is out there, kind of what, what the zoning is, what industries are out there, and then really start investigating sites that could be developed and what they could be developed for, is kind of a very general idea of the plan.
Thank you.
Other questions?
All right, well, I will be back to report the second quarter, hopefully maybe not so late into it. We'll get a, we'll get on our way here since we started a little bit late, so, thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item B, Local Option of Sales Tax Budget, Deobligate Portion of FY18 Line Item for Simcoe Dues.
So Supervisors, we had originally budgeted $7,293 for all 14 rural cities, being as we've spoke with all the cities and we have those that are signed on, that want to sign on, onboard. I feel like it's, you know, necessary or time that we can go ahead and deobligate that $1,800 back into the lost budget for unallocated reserves. I spoke with Dennis Butler about this and requesting that you make a motion to move that $1,804.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Dennis, is this already reflected in the, you had distributed to the board members recently updated loss sheets?
This will actually increase your.
Okay. Very good. So could you please get updated sheets out to the board members? Thank you. Discussion. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes 5-0. Item C for information is a Quarterly Update on the Rural Comprehensive Planning Project.
So Supervisors, I just wanted to give you an update and let you know what's going on with the communities that are engaged in the planning process, those that are about to, and those that are waiting. We've had some delays, unexpected delays in the planning process, which have put us behind the originally anticipated schedule. I've spoke with the consultants about this, and it's really at no one's blame for not being able to get some of this done. A lot of it's just been some unfortunate circumstances. We had a city clerk that had a stroke, and we've had some issues with another community and their urban renewal plans and urban revitalization plans. So we've just, with these smaller staff, they've just been, encountered some issues that they feel like they can't take on some of these additional planning projects. And so with that being said, the consultants that we're using have a very high fidelity to the process, to the planning process, and they have just not been willing to, you know, throw some stuff together and kind of move on to the next, to the next step. So I've had some very focused conversations with them just recently. You can see that in addition to their memo, I requested them to provide me an update with updating their timelines from what they originally proposed to what, where they're currently at. And I think that once we get sort of some of these, you know, out of the, unclogged out of the pipe, the next, the next batch will be on schedule to where they originally anticipated where we'd be at as far as a timeline. So I guess I just wanted to let you know where we're at with that. I know that Simmering Quarry had staff present at our town hall meeting this summer and provided an update. And at the last town hall meeting, there were some questions from Danbury about when they were going to go. And so we're in communication with the cities that are scheduled to go. We've had to make some changes about who's going to go next because there are some at a level of readiness that others aren't. So, but, I mean, overall, I still feel good about the project in terms of where we're at today and completion levels. So if you have any questions, just feel free to ask.
Have the communities to be delayed, have they been contacted then by Simmering Quarry initially on that or yourself?
Yes, it's been at their request to be delayed, so, yeah, I, you know, Justin Yucarovich with Simmering Quarry is actually in communication with these city clerks, sometimes, in some cases, more than I am. So I've been actually really impressed with his level of knowledge of what's going on in the towns and some of the dynamics of the community and those sorts of things.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item 10 from Board Administration, Director Dennis Butler, His Approval of the Annual Urban Renewal Report for FY17.
This is an annual report that's due December 1st. We do have it done, after you make a motion to approve this, or the report, it will be sent to the state, so we fulfill our December 1st requirement. We did get revenue from all of our different TIF districts. The expenditure we did make totaled $230,000. Those expenses included rebate to Platinum Grain, which is now New Co-op, I believe, of $98,223. We did repay a loan that we'd made several years ago from General Basic to the Urban Renewal Fund to get us jump-started. We did pay that back to the General Basic this, last year, fiscal year 17. We did pay $13,862 in attorney fees for various projects, Dogwood Trail, Geleda, other items there, AGP. And then we spent $18,000 on interest payment on a loan that we're going to start paying off in two years. That includes Dogwood Trail and AGP addition down there. By the way, that's pretty much it. This will gradually grow more and more as we progress year to year. The CF's starting to kick in, there'll be some major changes coming up. There are good changes.
Everything's good in your world.
99.9. Probably got to be 110. This is perfect.
Mr. Taylor.
Dennis, can you, you put together this master matrix Excel file of all future years of revenue of CF, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
What do you call that?
Well, it's a 20-year plan of our tax increment.
Okay.
Includes all of our districts except Platinum Grain, because that's a rebate.
Okay.
Shows what can be released following a policy the board did adopt. That can change year to year, depends if we got more increment expenses. If we don't, we release more and more.
So my question is, has that financial picture changed from the last time that the board saw that, which could have been, oh, six, nine months ago, something like that?
No, because actually the rebate for the 20-year rebate plan or actually bringing the tax assessments on over 20 years, that's all programmed out. The only thing, it can change it, which is a good thing, is additional growth in these TIF districts. And we fully expect that to happen through our Economic Development Department and also just normal construction.
Is that something that, and I know we have this from yesteryear, but I'm not sure that our board, and I mean the current board, has seen that. Is that something that you would mind either emailing out or providing as an informational item, just to remind us of the future revenue that we can count on someday?
I can email it out, or we can have an information item also, either way. It's a pretty good sized spreadsheet because it's over 20 years, includes a lot of information.
Okay.
I would think also a report on what the board can expect for FY19, if you could have that drafted up and distributed, or if you want to have it as an information item in December, I think it'd be helpful for us to see what to expect as income.
Michelle Scaff is working on our tax base, that could be out a lot sooner than it has been in the past because things are going pretty well. She's backed up very good on this and is looking good. One good piece of news for some of the taxing bodies is CF has come through with their assessment on this pipeline. For us, we rebate our portion of that tax bill, but for the school district, Liberty Township, extension, WIT, County Assessor, this assessment the state did place on was $90 million. It's one of the biggest assessments for a pipeline in the state because they are tremendous users of natural gas down there. So that's something we kind of anticipated. It's a big chunk of valuation, but the taxable value is $90 million. And each year, 4%, and 5%, 4% of CF does come online, but I will break that down. Those will be included in our tax base coming up this next budget period.
I think it'd be, it'd be helpful if you don't mind providing that for the board and then presenting on it, just because sometimes we look at that information and it's a ton of information, and rather than all of us contacting you individually, I just think it might be good for the public and for us to engage in that dialogue, even if it's brief, just to make sure we're.
We're going to start realizing the impacts of CF coming this, coming fiscal year, when you budget in January, February. There'll start to be an impact, but as we go on, the impact gets pretty tremendous.
But it starts small.
It starts small.
I just want to make sure that that's heard out there because a lot of times people.
In my packet, I did include 50-50. That will change each year, some years it may be 50-50, some years it may be 20% economic development, 80% tax relief. That varies each year. But the schedule I made up shows 50-50 split with the policy. Like I say, that could change because it's a lot of money down the road.
And as we go forward, that's something I think as a board, we should take that, the 50% for economic development, and really ask for a plan from our department head on that going forward.
Yep, because there'll be, you know, two, three years down the road, it'll start to be pretty good chunks for economic development if we have it.
And if I could just remind us, and I don't want to start deliberating on this point necessarily, but that 20-50 vision, envision plan for the future talked about a recommendation for 50% economic development. I don't know that our board acted at least on that portion. We acted on tax relief for 50%. I just want to be careful in that because as you look ahead to capital infrastructure and the $12.1 million and so on, I don't want to limit 50% of all CF revenue for being solely for economic development because there's a lot of other needs. You know, maybe it's appropriate for 15% to be to buildings and energy maintenance and different things like that, so just a thought.
That's the bank the board will have.
Yep.
Other thoughts? I'd move approval?
Second.
Second by Radek. Discussion. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes 5-0. Thanks, Dennis.
Very much.
We'll now recess the Board of Supervisors meeting and convene the Weber Drainage District Trustees Meeting with item 11 for action. This is approval of the minutes of the November 14th meeting. I'll move approval?
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Discussion. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes 5-0. We are now adjourned to Weber Drainage District Trustees Meeting and continue the Board of Supervisors meeting with item 12, Chairman's Report, which includes item A, WCICC meeting. I attended November 15th along with Supervisor Potabone. Some items of note, some improvement requests were floated and sent on to both the County Board and City Council. The linchpin is really the City Council, I think, in some of these requests. Their process is a little bit different. The City Council members on the WCICC Board don't necessarily see those at the formation stages, and so the purpose of the, of our meeting, I think, is good to inform them of what they are and so they can pass them on to the city manager. But they involve several different promotions from network manager to systems manager, et cetera, and involve a different, a planned capital improvement, I believe, with a $5,000 addition from the budget. addition from the budget. Mr. Potabom, do you have anything to add?
The only other thing was that there may be a request for an additional operator out at the 911 center. But that, rather than stop it or push it at this point, we just told them to continue through the process and handle them with both entities during their processes.
Move on then to item B, SIMCO, Siouxland Regional Transportation Planning Association, Policy Board I attended November 16th. We covered the Transportation Improvement Progress Report. We covered staff duties from Michelle Boston Ellis, Surface Transportation Block Grant, status and due dates and how those forms are being sent out to the different communities, STBG, basically anything that's 80% federal, and those process updates. There's also discussion of the draft Public Participation Plan, which is being, which has been formulated with federal grant dollars and is very extensive. I mean, it's a, it's a good, good sized guideline here for how to become involved and the stakeholders in SIMCO. All the SIMCO meetings at the office are open to the public. I've never seen any member of the public attend, but there are millions, over the years, millions of federal dollars that flow through that organization and that council of governments. So they do quite a bit of work and our county engineer is quite active as well. Item C is the SIMCO Siouxland Regional Transit System Board of Directors Meeting I attended November 16th as well. There was some purchasing of light duty buses. They keep very busy. Most of the money is from the Federal Transit Administration. There's a building update and the thought going forward, of course, is to perhaps have a hub for those, for those buses. But at this time, they're simply looking at, at making the wages competitive for, for the drivers, which in the past had been an issue and staff turnover was, was also, or driver turnover, I should say, was also an issue. They anticipate some increases in cost due to medical insurance, around 11% is what they, they estimate for context. The county's been told between eight. Item D was the Western Iowa Community Improvement Regional Housing Trust Fund, Board of Directors Meeting I attended November 16th. The recommended change that our county board was approached on regarding the per capita distribution for the housing trust fund matched by county was formally approved with unanimous support from, from the five member counties. There's also a recent fiscal audit that came back positive. Item E is a Security Committee meeting I attended with Supervisor Taylor, November 17th. Obviously, without getting into too much detail, it's encouraging that no incidents rose to the level of, of report to the committee since the last meeting. Just wanted to inform the auditor, I did bring up some, some questions that had been raised to the auditor and myself in regards to the keeping of, of minutes and the consensus was to, because some of those comments were surprising to the judicial branch, to seek a formal opinion from the county attorney's office.
I just, if I, I think Lisa McNeil's work on that committee has been tremendous and is much appreciated and will be much missed as she moves on in retirement. So I'd just like to thank her because that takes quite a bit of work as far as, and she's highly organized and pays great attention to detail. The other thing is there will be some CIP requests that are one-time expenditures related to not necessarily personnel, but cameras and other things to keep us more safe, and I'll leave it at that. And then the other thing is training, which has identified anything from, you know, the sort of active shooter to proper procedures for mail and other things. I think that, again, without going into a whole lot of detail, that those are all very, very good things to keep our employees and keep people within our walls safe. So good job on behalf of all the entities involved, including the sheriff's office, judges, juvenile, court in detention, and so on.
Yes, thank you very much. Item F is a feedlot to fork tour by the Iowa Cattlemen's Association, which I was very persistently invited to and attended November 17th in Nimahe, Iowa. Spent six and a half hours of good quality time with the Cattlemen's Association. Was educated on CAFOs, KFOs, operations above 1,000 AMO units. Legacy Farm was one of the hosts. Both, both hosts were engaged in quite a bit of environmentally friendly practices. Were very appreciated to have a supervisor from a larger county attend. I didn't know what to expect, to be honest. There were a few other supervisors. There was representatives from the DNR. There was some other state association members and Representative Chuck Holtz. I approached him and said, I've seen you at a couple of our meetings in regards to this issue. I know you have an opinion, you just haven't really shared it with the board. Some of the, the comments as we're sitting around and talking after getting a tour of best practices was around, the comments were made by the representative and by other supervisors or, or people engaged in this business. You know, we, we don't want to open up, you know, we don't want to open up the matrix because of the unintended consequences and what, we're familiar with that line of thought. But then in the same breath, he says, but there definitely should be rules on distance, notification of neighbors. That's what really caused all those issues in Woodbury County. One of those, you know, homeowners didn't notify his neighbors. And definitely should be required manure management plans, which was funny to me because, of course, that's somewhat of the stance our county took, not without a lot of discussion. But I thought that was interesting. It wasn't, it wasn't as I might have gone in expecting, a complete, you know, it wasn't a hostile environment, let's just say that. It was, it was very, it was very educational. The manure management plans were top notch from what we saw and that, you know, really is a, really is a concern of the, of the larger, from those larger confinement operations that the, that the smaller ones don't give them a bad name with, with how they practice. So I could go on and on, but...
Well, I was sorry, I was unable to attend. That was a day going into drill, but I was at a Veteran Affairs Ceremony when a member of the Iowa Farm Bureau came up to me and, and engaged in the conversation. So while I wasn't there, I was with her, with you in spirit and also made, made it seriously known and willing to engage in a way that maybe I could have done to an even greater degree as we strike that balance and educating myself on the issues.
Also, there was a, there was a admitted difference in the discussion between cattle operations and hog confinements. They were seen as different animals, pun intended. It's more conventional and more, you know, easier, easier to support in different forms when you're looking at a cattle operation than, than hog, hog confinement.
They feed you?
Hmm?
Did they feed you?
Yes.
Okay.
You'll never guess what. It was steak.
Did they have creamed corn as a side?
No, they did not.
That's odd.
Yeah, well, that's why everyone looks up to Woodbury County. Like I said, I could, I could go on, obviously, but I thought it was interesting that the, that the reception of a member of Woodbury County was not as hostile as I, I would have anticipated, as prepared for, different conversations. A lot, a lot of it just hinges upon being a good neighbor and notifying people what's going on. That really seems to boil down to a lot of what the issue is. And we've discussed that as a board with how things should be referred to perhaps or, or hashed out at those adjustment meetings. With that, item G is Adoption Day Celebration. I attended, was honored to speak at on November 18th. I believe approximately eight families finalized their adoptions upstairs and it was, it was a great event. The atrium is much more suited to the singing from the children's choir than it is the speaking part, especially when there's a lot of celebration and talking and cake cutting and people milling around on the, on the second floor. But it was a, it's a good, it's a good thing that, it's encouraging to see all the judges there that are involved with the process and many of them spoke, as well as some adoptive parents. And certainly one of the better things our public building is used for, you know, for the public good. So I really, really appreciate the patience of those, those families and everyone involved with, with that programming. I'll add one item. As you know, Salix was, with the turnover on their council, preferred to have our, host us at a rural town hall meeting later. I did hear back from Sloan because I reached out to them after that. They have the same opinion that January would be best. I informed them if this year is any indication, our first quarter meeting, if we continue that practice will, which I think we should, would most likely be after budget, March or, or April. But I said they'd be in the, they'd be in the mix and they were very excited, just not right now. So with that said, I've reached out to Lawton, the other community close to, to where a lot of our department heads are, and they will get back to me next week. With that, Historical Committee, obviously, we have that upstairs. One item we did not discuss was cornerstone time capsule costs that was distributed by the county Building Services Director. Before I turn it over to Supervisor Taylor, who chairs the committee, just want to note that the, there was a discussion of whether or not to open the time capsule because of the cost and the unintended consequences of taking out a part of the cornerstone were, you know, substantial if they were to occur. But our committee, after a couple of meetings on the topic, allocated up to $10,000. The total project estimate that we have, that we were given is less than $5,000. So things do come in under budget sometimes. Mr. Taylor?
And I think, I mean, not to belabor the point, but it was well worth it and it was worth just seeing the excitement on the different historians' faces of, of everything that's in there. And I think it's a great, great, great thing and it's just a precursor of even better things to come. So that's exciting and there you go.
Very good. Item 13 is reports on committee meetings.
All right, a couple, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, Sealand District Health has rescheduled a week later to December 13th. They're going to take up budget and as you know, their, their process starts a little earlier and dovetails with a placeholder as far as what they believe we may have for a health insurance increase, if we have one at all. And so we'll be working through that process, I hope, at some point to sit down with Siouxland District Health Director Dennis ahead of that meeting, so we can put that as a placeholder. Secondly, I wanted to update the board regarding Sioux Rivers and just briefly what's happening there. So as you are all well aware and saw a media story recently, Woodbury County is seeking to respectfully enter into Rolling Hills and that process was described well in that it's going to take an approval and their meeting is November 29th. That's on a Wednesday. And it's going to take not only the approval of recommendation by their governance board, one supervisor representing each county, which I like, and that then we'll go to each of their respective boards of supervisors and then come back before that. Sioux Rivers, interestingly enough, moved their meeting from November 28th to December 5th to be after Rolling Hills, I believe, and this is according to Dennis. You correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, because they wanted to see what action may be taken at Rolling Hills. Correct, Dennis? Not knowing that there would be no action taken at Rolling Hills that day, that their supervisors are seeking more information and we're trying to present all of the financial information and giving anything and everything that we can in order for them to make a good decision. We want that to be a decision that they believe is in their best interest. We hope to continue to make that case. So where does that leave us with Sioux Rivers? As you know, we have notified withdrawal and we are withdrawn from Sioux Rivers. That's a fact as of June 30th. We are seeking another and, in my opinion, better home. I have asked for placement on the agenda for mediation, but this is very key, mediation for withdrawal and meaning that the mediation would be specific to making clear the amicable questions that may, settlement to those questions, including property disposition, which is really just a crisis and stabilization center, and our reserve fund balance. Until we have that, even to a clear degree, it is, it makes it more challenging for another region looking at us. We have asked, I have asked for DHS to weigh in and to weigh in on whether Sioux Rivers, two counties claiming that they can stand alone as a region is viable and to my knowledge, their response is the question has not been asked. So if neither Sioux nor Plymouth County have asked the question, if they can stand alone, then the response will not be forthcoming. So that is kind of an overview. If you have any questions, I can answer them from what I know. I'm excited about the opportunity to continue making the case and I'm excited about the prospects, but that there may be a better region. And I want to let you know that I've learned more working with Dennis on trying to peel back the layers of the onion regarding the budget, regarding the per capita, regarding changing population and the administrative fund balances than I ever knew before. And I'll just leave it at that. So it's been a good educational process along the way.
Do you anticipate the earliest then for any action to be taken to be a December meeting of the Rolling Hills Board?
Rolling Hills does have a December meeting and I was recently asked the question, what has, as you know, Rolling Hills waived, they did vote affirmatively to waive their deadline, which is good, past November 15th. And the question was asked, what has it been waived to? Well, it hasn't been waived to a certain time, so they could take action in the future. But as we all know, for budgeting purposes, it would, it would help everybody if ahead of January, that, that was beginning to come to fruition. So that's about as clear a picture as I can give you.
And from there, do you anticipate willingness of all the counties at least to put the item on the agenda?
I think that'll be a determination respectfully of the Rolling Hills, each of their representatives and a majority of their governance board. And I made it known, and I will make it known, I'm appreciative of their due diligence, of their CEO stating to, to media that she follows a process, which is refreshing and, and nice to see. So I commend them for doing so and want to make the case that Woodbury County will be a, a great partner in the region and it's also nice for a region to be petitioned into instead of having people try to leave it and not just one county.
Anything to add to that, Mr. Radig? Any other committee meeting reports?
I have a question. Supervisor DeWitt, you attended a meeting, but what was that, the EMS or EMA? What was that?
A week ago last night in Claming Hill.
Okay.
Would you like to talk about it?
You have no idea. You weren't here last week?
I was, but I want to follow up on that.
Uh, there hasn't been any more meetings than I'm aware of, but why don't you ask me? There hasn't been any more meetings than I'm aware of, but why don't you ask me what you'd like to know?
Well, Gary Brown sent an email that, I got it and there was supposed to be some follow-up, but I guess the reason I wanted to talk about that was that every few years, our office is kind of the liaison with township trustees and we put on a school, Dennis has participated and we do, what we talk about because of a turnover of township trustees, we talk about what their, what their duties are and what the, what their options are. And one of the things that we talked about after that meeting is we've had some conversations with Gary Brown about this and after Mr. Brown brought up the item about adding paramedics to the, to his organization, I think it's important, and I'm going to continue to talk to the chairperson about this, but I think it's important that that part of the conversation is had with those township trustees and what, what their ability is. Because we've discussed this before when we've done schools, they, they contract with cities to provide fire protection, but they also have, it's not a may, I mean, not a shell, it's a may, as far as emergency services for ambulances and that type of activity. And so we, we discussed a little bit about that and I think, I think it would be appropriate at this time, especially with that issue and where, and apparently you're going to be talking about it again during the budget process coming up here, is that that, I think that conversation should take place between the cities and the townships too, about what the possibility is for funding that type of request that was brought forward. And I'll talk with the chairperson and maybe bring a proposal to the full board after that about that, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that we're considering that because just the conversations that we've had, I think it is appropriate for people to begin that conversation about how, if that is indeed something that those folks think they need coverage for is how it's appropriate to fund that. Like I said, I'll bring that forward, but I think one of the things that I've been considering is that you have a joint meeting with the township trustees, the full Board of Supervisors and those mayors out there to start that discussion. I think that would be something that you folks should consider. And like I said, I'll talk with the chairperson some more and then maybe bring a proposal to you to do that. We do have a line item that, for township trustees, that we've paid for this type of meeting out of before.
I think it's a good idea. Obviously, there's a need and those closest to that and most aware of that are, are the people that you're talking about.
Right.
Did you ever thought about that?
So the... Well, I just, that was just for information. I don't think we should get into
Okay.
Discussion of that sort of thing, but I just wanted to say that that's out there. Give you a heads up that considering that and we'll bring it to you to do that.
Okay. The reason I asked him is it started as a question to Supervisor DeWitt. Please continue with any reports on committee meetings.
I'm good.
Hearing none. Item 14 is citizen concerns. Citizen concerns.
County Barrett, 1521 South Cleveland. I wanted to consider that, continue that discussion of why I still strongly believe in the need for, to provide medication up to the 250th percent of poverty level over the 150th percent of poverty level and that for only 30 days of the Rolling Hills Plan. The 250th percent poverty level, that covers the average working person. They were probably doing okay until that life-changing event of mental illness. There could have been a job loss, possibility of a divorce after that event, or if it was a child that developed a mental illness, one parent may have had to quit working in order to, to take care of that child and that cut their income in half. Or simply their insurance didn't cover it and they're out of cash to pay the bill to get the medication. All economic levels, there's not a single economic level that doesn't experience mental illness. So it's, it's not, it's not just the people that are poor that have mental illness. It's every single economic level. In the small, in that smaller economies of the Rolling Hills, they have 400 to our 2,000-plus individuals. And so if we're talking medications, that's making a lot of phone calls in order to cover the population that's not going to be covered. We've worked well with Plymouth and Sioux counties. We have for years, will continue long after. We did, we worked well together long before we were a region. That's where we've put, placed people. In fact, we'll probably continue to place people there and I know we will and we'll have services there. We'll also probably have quite a few individuals that have become residents of Sioux and Plymouth County. They'll continue to be residents there. They got, they got, were put there because of the services and now they've become residents there. For me, changing regions is not a simple matter.
Thank you. Any other citizen concerns? Item 15, any board concerns? Everyone, please have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. We are adjourned.